Good morning. All right, good morning, everyone. It is 9:30, so we will get started and as is customary, we'll begin with a moment of silence. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We, the next on the agenda is public comment or any public comment this morning. Then we have approval of the minutes of our last meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes from the last meeting. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved. The purpose of the first part of the meeting this morning is to reorganize and the first thing is to reorganize the Board of Commissioners. Do I have a motion to nominate a chair for 2019?
I'll nominate Bill Ames as chairman.
Second.
You caught me off guard. I was just ready to nominate you, Commissioner Phillips.
I thought that I was, in the absence of...
I, if you withdraw your motion with the seconded's permission...
I'll withdraw my motion.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Phillips as Chair of the Board for 2019.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to appoint Commissioner Phillips as Chair for 2019. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Here's a new chair, sorry. Do you want to sit here or...
No, stay with me. Yeah, right down the line, I'm looking for a motion to nominate the Vice Chairman for the Board. I'll nominate Bill Ames.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Comment or question? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. I'll look for a motion to, some, I'll look for a motion to nominate the Secretary for the Board.
I'll nominate Commissioner Litz.
Second motion. A motion, a second for Secretary, Commissioner Litz. All in favor, any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. We look for a motion to reappoint our Chief Clerk, County Administrator, Jamie Waltonmuth.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we reappoint Jamie as Chief Clerk and County Administrator. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So moved. We'll look to reappoint our Solicitor for 2019. We'll look to promote you for that.
I move that we appoint Dave Warner with Buxton Davis as our Solicitor.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So moved. Look for a motion to reappoint all employees on the county payroll to their respective positions effective January 1st, 2019.
I mean, to reappoint all the employees to their respective positions?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved.
Not this particular one, you're just going to recess this one and go into the others.
Is that correct on Dave Warner? To adopt our calendar for 2019, seek a motion?
I make a motion to adopt the calendar as printed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question on the calendar for 2019? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So moved. Thank you. Liaison ships unchanged from 2018. We look for a motion to adopt the liaison ships for 2019 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? No. Look to adopt the packet of other county depository banks as presented by our Treasurer.
I didn't think I got that. I'd appreciate a copy after this. Thank you.
List of the banks that we are associated with in terms of deposits. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the depository banks as the list that was printed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the depository banks. Any comment or question on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? No. So moved. Actually, I have an extra copy. Now, can we go right into Salary Board?
Yep.
We will look for a, an appointment of the Vice Chairman of Salary Board. Is there a nomination?
If yours, if yours appears, typically.
I nominate Bill Ames.
Now, second that motion for Vice Chairman of the Salary Board. Any comment or question, any additions? Not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So moved. We'll move on to the Secretary. Is there a nomination?
I'll nominate Commissioner Litz as Secretary of the Salary Board.
Now, second that motion. Any additions or comments or questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you. And we'll go down through the different other assignments to appoint the Solicitor to the Salary Board. Look for a motion to...
So moved.
Do we have a name that we can associate with?
That would also be Dave Warner, typically. I'm kind of the same as, doing the same as... I'll second a motion to appoint Dave Warner as Chief Clerk for the Salary Board.
Any comment or question? This would include this motion, Jamie, of the rural offices. There's enough there.
That's going to be the ones that are attached.
Okay. All right, the motion stands as presented. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Opposed? So moved. As Michelle went through this.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Michelle, you're Director of Human Resources. I'm going to go through the motions for each of the rural offices in both of the rural counties. So, motion to set the salaries of employees within the Office of Patroler as established during the budget hearings for 2019 or as directed by their current labor agreement.
Second motion.
I'm sorry, I'll withdraw. I'll second it. We're confused a little bit. You're still around that meeting.
Okay. Sorry. Let's speak to the atmospheric pressures. We have a motion to assign the salaries as presented. Is there any other comment? Not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Motion passed.
Motion to set the salaries of employees within the Office of the Preparatory Clerk of Courts as established during the budget hearings for 2019 or as directed by their current labor agreement.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we apply those salaries. Any comment or question? Not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign? So moved.
Motion to set the salaries of employees within the Office of Register of Will's Orphans Court as established during the budget hearings for 2019 or as directed by their current labor agreement.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the Orphans Court salaries as presented. Any comment or question? None, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign? So moved.
Motion to set the salaries of employees within the Office of Sheriff as established during the budget hearings for 2019 or as directed by their current labor agreement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the salaries as presented from the Sheriff's Department. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign? So moved.
Motion to set the salaries of employees within the Office of Treasurer as established during the budget hearings for 2019 or as directed by their current labor agreement.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second presented to approve the salaries within the Tre- excuse me, the Treasurer's Office. Any comment on the motion? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign? So moved.
Motion to set the salaries of all other county employees as established during the budget hearings for 2019 or as directed by their current labor agreement.
Second.
There's a motion and a double second. No, we have a motion and a second. To approve the salaries of all other employees not previously mentioned. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign? So moved. Thank you, Commissioner.
Calling the Board of Assessment.
At this time, we will nominate a Chair. Well, do we still have the vote online or is mine just set by all? Okay. Nominate a Chair for the Board of Commis- of Reassessment.
I nominate Commissioner Litz as specified by the county code.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. And at this time, we need to nominate a Vice Chairman?
Currently, that's Commissioner Phillips for 2018. I prefer to nominate Bill Ames for that position.
Is there a second to the motion? I second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Is there a nomination for Secretary?
I nominate Commissioner Phillips as Secretary of the Board of Assessment.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Is there a motion to appoint the Administrator with no additional salary?
I'll move to appoint Jamie as the Administrator for the Assessment Board.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Is there a nomination to appoint the Solicitor?
I move to nominate Dave Warner, Buxton Davis Solicitor for the Board of Assessment.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. And is there a motion to nominate the Chief County Assessor?
I'll move to nominate Dan Seaman as the Chief County Assessor for reappointment.
And a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. And then at this time, we have necessary expenses incurred by the Board of Assessment, revision of taxes that we do need to approve.
I move that we pay the bills.
Bill's not, Bill's motion. I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Then we have a list of dates to establish for hearings to hear the assessment revisions. Is there a motion?
I'll move to adopt the calendar as presented.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
I have a comment before we would adjourn. When we first started this, I, we weren't given an opportunity to, for comment before we voted, but I do want to just get in to the record that maybe in the first quarter of this year, that we take a look at the expanding, the, or excuse me, paneling of third-party board that would be independent and more qualified in terms of real estate background, at least to discuss that sometime in the first quarter. It is budgeted, so we, we just need to talk about it. I want to get that into the record.
I think, you know, we can do that, but I also think that we were elected to do this and we have done this and there's no reason we shouldn't be doing it.
Well, I, I disagree. I mean, we don't need to discuss it now. I just brought it up as a first-quarter opportunity, but many look at this as a conflict of interest for us to be setting rates on properties when we're responsible for the budget and the outcome of raising taxes and such. That, that's where the crux of the question is.
Well, I think that we have a competent staff and that we pull out information and the staff advises us and we do not, we have done everything very fair and not political. So, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I think we already have one.
Yeah, a motion, not a second.
A second, I apologize.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries.
Then, being on to calling of the Board of Elections and Registration Commission for
Call the Board of Elections the order and first thing we need is a motion for electing a Chair.
And your current makeup is Commissioner Ames as Chair, Commissioner Phillips as Vice, and Commissioner Litz as Secretary.
I'll move to nominate Commissioner Ames as Chair of the Election Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to elect Commissioner Ames as Chair of the Board of Elections. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered. And we have a motion to elect the Vice Chair of the Board of Elections.
I'll nominate Mr. Phillips.
I'll second it. All those in favor of Commissioner Phillips as serving as Vice Chair of the Board of Elections indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered. And now we need a nomination for Secretary of the Board of Elections.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Ames as, excuse me, Commissioner Litz as Secretary.
All right, and I'll second that motion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered. And now we need a motion for Chief Clerk of the Board of Elections.
Nominate Jamie Waltonmuth.
This would be Michael Anderson.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Michael Anderson would be the Chief Clerk of Elections.
Chief Clerk of Elections. I was thinking, yeah, Michael Anderson, my apologies.
I'll second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second to appoint Michael Anderson as Chief Clerk for the Board of Elections. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered. And now we need a nomination for Solicitor.
I'll move to reappoint David Warner, Jr. as our Solicitor for the Election Board.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to reappoint Dave Warner with Buxton Davis as the Solicitor for the Board of Elections. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered. I have a motion to adjourn. So moved.
I do have a question before we adjourn and you also indicate, you also...
Oh, do we, we still need one more motion. Okay, sorry.
The title of Chief Clerk, isn't he, his title, voter registrar? Or is that in law?
Chief Clerk of Elections as far as I know. I mean, as long as I've known. I can't say I've ever researched it because it's always been Chief Clerk of Elections.
It's been on the, on the records that way.
I know some...
I just never associated his title with Chief Clerk.
Oh, we do need a motion then to...
So moved to pay the bills.
Make funds a little, we pay the bills. I'll second the motion. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Yes.
Typically, Commissioners during an election year in which Commissioners are up, you appoint substitutes on the Election Board. When will that be done?
I think right now, having sat in on conversations with the Board of the State County Commissioners Association, there is discussion going on as to when you become a candidate. Is it the first of the year? Is it when you lift petitions? Is it when you announce? Is it when you file petitions? And Solicitors for CCAT and also the Department of State are negotiating this at this time. We, I don't know that I've ever felt, heard anything official from the State. I have heard something official from the federal government in the past and that was at the time you file petitions. That was with the FCC. But at this time, I have not heard that the decision has been made. Has anyone else?
Well, locally, it really isn't. It's up to the President Judge. President Judge is the one that appoints an alternate Board of Elections when the sitting Board is on the ballot and so I would expect that if all three of the sitting Board members file petitions, that it would be following that, that he would, that he would do that. That's, that's always been the practice is, is once the petitions are filed. I realize Commissioner Litz is saying there's some conversation over when, when a Commissioner is a candidate because of the voter, the voting machine discussion and who gets to make that decision. There's conversation about that, but, but as far as appointed locally, whoever the President Judge has been has historically done that, following the, filing petitions.
Okay, now, we did adjourn, right? Or we did?
No.
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn. So...
Second.
We are adjourned. The Board of Elections are adjourned. Okay. We may go on to your regular scheduled programming.
We convene our public meeting. And is there any public comment? Hearing none, we'll go on to the Treasurer's Report. Good day, subjects. Good morning, Treasurer. Treasurer, good morning. You may proceed.
All right, we have received, January 4th and January 2nd, a $571,504.17. So that brings us to a total cash of $2,050,683.66. We had expenditures this week of $1,112,672.85. Our tax claim is $25,947.21. So we have a balance of $912,63.66.
I'll seek a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Treasurer's Report as read.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Treasurer Noonan's report. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So moved. One again.
One more and again.
When you're ready, you may proceed with the proceedings.
We end shaking Human Resources Assistant. Moving on to personnel transactions under resignations and terminations. Kaylee Fink, Telecommunicator, resignation effective December 12th, 2018. Paola Martinez, Telecommunicator, resignation effective December 28th, 2018. Ahmed Nasser, Full-Time Correctional Officer, resignation effective January 9th, 2019. Nicholas Saracini, Full-Time Correctional Officer, resignation effective January 12th, 2019. Carol Brown, Part-Time Jury Attendant, resignation effective January 10th, 2019. And Sean Capretti, Collection Officer, resignation effective December 17th, 2018.
Whether to a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we take care of those resignations and terminations. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? So ordered.
Under FMLE, leave of absence, Daniel Bolt from the prison, one week of FMLE effective December 22nd, 2018. Huggins Jane Ali, Domestic Relations, nine days of FMLE effective December 18th, 2018. Karen Unger from MHI DEI, two weeks of intermittent unpaid FMLE effective December 31st, 2018. And Kristen Weaver from the Renova Center, eight weeks of FMLE effective January 4th, 2019.
Make a motion to approve the leave of absence as read.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? So moved.
Under changes to status transfers and promotions, I have a motion to approve President Judge Kowalk's recommendation to reclassify the remaining four court reporter positions in the Courts Department from 35 hours per week to 40 hours per week effective January 1st, 2019.
So moved.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? So ordered.
Under other transactions, motion to approve Daniel Hogg, Chief Information Officer in the Information Technology Department, recommendation to create a full-time network technician position at a grade 11 on the non-union salary chart effective January 1st, 2019.
Make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve Daniel Hogg's request for additional help. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? So moved.
Motion to approve Jamie Wogamute, Chief Clerk/County Administrator's recommendation to create a full-time Deputy Chief Clerk/County Administrator position at a grade 19 on the non-union salary chart effective January 1st, 2019.
So...
Second.
Aye. It's been moved and seconded. My only comment is way overdue, but get a good person, Jamie, thank you. Any comment or question beyond that? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign? So moved.
Motion to approve Sheriff Bruce Plener's recommendations to create the following positions within the Sheriff's Department. One full-time Lieutenant position at a grade 13 on the non-union salary chart. Two additional full-time Deputy Sheriff positions at a grade 8 on the correlated non-professional union salary chart. And one additional casual part-time Deputy Sheriff position at a grade 7 on the non-union salary chart, all effective December 30th, 2018.
I'm proud to make that motion to support the Sheriff in his effort to create better security here at the courthouse and the satellite offices.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded and before we vote, any comment, Sheriff?
Thank you.
Okay, so noted.
Add a few words.
You know, we know this is a good thing for the whole county. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Community Action Partnerships would like to hire Samuel Ortiz as a part-time reentry coordinator at the rate of $14.98 per hour effective January 7th, 2019. And the Sheriff's Office would like to hire Sarah Stevie as a full-time Deputy Sheriff at the rate of $15.96 per hour effective January 14th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those hires. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? So ordered.
Moving on to Salary Board, motion to approve all transactions previously read plus the following. Renee Firestone, one-time merit, UPI clerk in the Assessment Office at the amount of Renee Firestone, one-time merit, UPI clerk in the assessment office at the amount of one thousand dollars, effective January seventeenth, 2019. Cindy Weidman, general clerk C in the recorder's office, one-time merit in the amount of five hundred dollars, effective January seventeenth, 2019. Denise Frabel, second deputy in the recorder of deeds office, one-time merit at the amount of five hundred dollars, effective January seventeenth, 2019. Stephanie Klein, general clerk C in the recorder of deeds office, one-time merit at the amount of five hundred dollars, effective January seventeenth. And Judith Plummer, general clerk C in voter registration, one-time merit in the amount of one thousand dollars, effective January seventeenth, 2019.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those merit, uh, assignments. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Under mandated trainings, I have Daniel Wright and Catherine Cottens from the DA's office would like to attend the 2019 TA traffic safety conference in State College, April ninth, 2019 through the twelfth, lodging and meals reimbursement, and date by ten dot.
Move to approve.
Second.
We'll move to approve the request from DA's office. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
None requested, I have John Fitzkey and Song Kim from the planning, planning department that would like to attend the Microsoft Excel training, part one and two, in Harrisburg. Part one will take place February twenty-sixth. Part two will take place March twenty-sixth. Nine hundred dollar total registration fee with mileage reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the request of the planning department. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same signs, so ordered.
Thank you.
Morning, morning.
Morning, Commissioner. Stephanie, Sheriff from Penn State Extension. I wanted to join you today to thank you for your support of transitioning our admin support services from county paid employees over to Penn State employees. They started their new employment at Penn State University yesterday. And here with me today, I have our new office manager, Deanne Rissert. Deanne comes to extension from a long and very extensive career as an office manager with Anderson Advertising. So I'd like her to share a little bit about her background for you, okay?
Good morning, everyone. As she said, I'm Deanne Rissert. I actually started my career here at the courthouse. I started in the comptroller's office under Ned Walt, and then went to the private sector, went out into the advertising world, worked there for twenty-plus years. So I have a lot of background in administrative and accounting. So, as Stephanie said, I started yesterday. I'm really excited to start in this new position and to serve the county of Lebanon and bring the extension services to the county, so.
We're excited.
Thank you.
We're excited to have Deanne, also a longtime Lebanon County resident.
Right.
Lives in the Myersstown area, and you serve on the Palmyra Library Board.
No, I'm on the Myersstown.
Myersstown.
Myersstown County Library Board, and I live right close to Jamie, I know Jamie. I live between Shakers Town and Kleinfelter'sville, although I have a Myersstown address. So graduated from Melco, so I've been in the eastern part of the county my whole life. So, it's nice to meet everyone.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good to see you. Jamie takes his motorcycle to work, you could, you know, hop a ride. Jump it off.
Put the sidecar on there.
Yeah, it's a little cool up there for that right now.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for handling the transition.
Yes, thank you for your support. Happy New Year.
Any else to come before the board?
I just have three things here. First one is actually the same thing in six parts, but the, for several years now, I've been signing the, the invoices for the CDVG and home program as provided by Dan Lyons of the Redevelopment Authority. He brings them, or he emails them over, Kathy will print them, I'll sign them, and we get them back to Dan. This happens a couple of times a week. The, the federal government has now required that this be done electronically, so the process will become that these are now emailed and sign in, check a box that it's approved, and send it back. So, in order to do that, they're requiring a delegation of signatory authority to name me by the board for that to take place, and then they'll receive these original signatory authorities, and then they'll be able to implement the online thing. So I just need your approval.
I make a motion to appoint Jamie to prepare those for the.
Second.
Signatory. It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question? Favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
And the only other thing I have are the two farm leases that we engage in with. Mr. Rice, Ken Rice of Rice Farms, who resides on Fox Road and farms the area of county property that's located adjacent to and behind the driver's center, and that would be for twelve hundred dollars per year for twenty nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that lease. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same signs.
And the second one is with Lori Horni of RR411, and he farms about an acre of land that is residual to another property the county owns out in South Amel, township right along Ninety Thirty Four. Just squares off his field, which works out for both.
Motion to approve that lease.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
That's about all. Very brief meeting today for the first one, but I'm sure we'll fill up for the seventeenth.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We stand adjourned, thank you very much. Happy New Year.